Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Rockford Area Schools Board of Education at a 6:33 AM. This is Amy Edwards and I'm calling the meeting to order beginning with the Pledge of Allegiance. The date is November 15, 2021. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we want to roll a call, first beginning with Jenny Neeland.
Here.
Brayden Anderson.
Here.
Eric Gordy.
Here.
Jessica Johnson.
Here.
Beth Frasca.
Here.
Amy Edwards. Here. We have full form on the board. With that, I would take a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Eric Gordy make a motion to approve tonight's agenda as presented.
I have a first from Mr. Gordy. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Ms. Neeland. First and second, any further discussion or comment? Pending no further discussion or comment, I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Agenda carries as presented. Next, we'll move into the public comment portion of our regular school board meeting, and I am going to read a statement as I do each month with the public comment portion of our board meeting. The statement is as follows. Public comment at each regular school board meeting is an opportunity for residents of the Rockford Area School District to address the school board. After being recognized by the chair, each individual will identify themselves and the group they represent, if any. To ensure that all individuals have a chance to speak, speakers will be limited to one three-minute presentation. The public comment portion of the regular school board meeting is not a time to debate and issue, but for the school board to hear comments from community members. It is important to remember that the board has a legal responsibility to protect their rights to privacy and due process for all employees and students. This means that both district policy and Minnesota law prohibit a public disclosure of matters that involve private data about students or employees, even without naming the student or employee in open session. This prohibition includes a public comment portion of a school board meeting. The board respects and values input on matters of concern, but when they involve complaints about particular students or employees, such input must be heard and addressed by the appropriate personnel, such as the building principal or superintendent, and not during an open meeting of the school board. With that, I do have one request this evening for public comment. With that, I will call upon Mr. Andrew Gill. And Mr. Gill, your note says that your subject is on leadership decisions. If you could first state your full name and address, that would be great to start with.
Yeah, Andrew Watkins Gill, 8001 Mobile Drive, Rockford.
And Mr. Gill, did you hear the statement that I read at the beginning of the meeting?
Yes, and the initial comments as well.
And do you feel that you can stay within those comments and within those paragraphs?
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, if not, you will know that I will do something called the gavel.
Right. If they read and I've been told which things not to say, then I'll line them out. Like, before I start, I have timed this. It's about three minutes and forty-five seconds, so I would ask for a little bit of grace on that timing and finishing my conclusion.
And Ms. Johnson is our clerk, and she will type you.
Hi, my name is Andy Gill. I am a father of five, with three of the five in Rockford School District at all three schools. Let me start off by putting aside any thoughts that I or we are working against you all as a school board or the schools themselves. I believe in strong partnerships with parents, taxpayers, and leaders of our schools. After all, all of this is about the kids. But this does not mean that a healthy and firm challenge should be avoided. It is a responsibility of parents. We love Rockford and this school district. I want to simply remind the board of what a school board is held accountable for and to. This is not meant to insult your intelligence. Rather, it is a healthy reminder that we should all align our decision-making with the students as our primary motivation. School boards sometimes begin to listen to legal counsel and make decisions based on this advice. This is not unacceptable, but I will say that usually, when we only listen to legal advice, our decision-making trends toward financial risk mitigation rather than the decisions that are best for our students. Among many things, school boards are held accountable for ensuring facilities are safe and adequate, hiring and evaluating the superintendent, and ratifying employee contracts. These responsibilities are what school board officials are publicly elected to do. Leadership decisions and those leadership decisions ultimately reflect on our community and our students. Mistakes happen. Poor decisions are made and learned from. This is life. But when some mistakes are made, lines are crossed that cannot be ignored. I teach my kids that no one is perfect and that we all make mistakes. Grace is given, but there are consequences to our decisions that go beyond the ever-present level of grace that is extended to them. Sometimes our decisions result in consequences that are unavoidable. I would ask the board to keep these fundamental teachings that we teach our children in mind when listening to legal counsel and making decisions related to the four areas of responsibility I mentioned earlier. I also teach my children that no one ever has the right to tell or ask them to do anything that they are uncomfortable with, period. At the first hint of this, I see a line that has been crossed, intentionally or not. Again, consequences sometimes reach beyond the ever-present line of grace that every human is afforded. I would ask the board to keep these fundamental teachings that we, as parents, teach our children in mind if and when evaluating the leadership decisions of those appointed under them and those subsequent leaders that lead our students. A safe and adequate facility is much more than LED lights and fire escape routes. Social and mental health safety is an aspect of safety. Finally, I would like to briefly talk about what my 21-year military career and experience in corporate leadership has taught me specifically about leadership. Leaders sometimes have to make tough decisions that are not popular, but they are always made with people they lead as their primary focus, not their own pride. A strong leader is passionately followed and adored, not fearfully obeyed. Their actions demand respect rather than their words. A strong leader over time gains respect not only from people they directly lead, but also those that are connected to those people that they lead. Their decision-making makes a clear trail of wise and thoughtful actions and many times humble moments of remorse and apologies. A strong leader owns their wins and their failures publicly and leads them to being a better leader over time. I would ask the board and the leaders that they hire keep these markers as guardrails to making hiring decisions and ratifying contracts. This is your responsibility, and your decisions should downwardly affect every decision that is made in the schools, with the end recipients being the students, our most prized commodity. Please refer to the emails sent to the entire school board on October 21, 2021 by myself, and the emails sent to the superintendent on September 29th, October 28th, and November 8th for added context to my words. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gill. Do we have any additional comments or public comments? With that, we'll close our public comment portion of the board meeting this evening. Moving on to item number four, which is our -- my button doesn't stick. Moving on to our next agenda item, which is our consent agenda item. I would entertain a motion or discussion related to our consent agenda items this
Eric Gordy make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented in the board packet.
I have a first. Do I have a second?
Beth Frasca, second.
I have a first and a second. Any further discussion or comment?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
I did reach out -- I was reaching out another matter to our activities director, and since I'm the only guy that assisted a gymnastics coach hired, and he told me that we don't have an assistant coach hired, so I just want to clarify on the consent agenda. I'm assuming that the assistant coach is actually for Community Ed.
Okay, what page or what article are you referencing, Ms. Johnson?
So, let me get there. In Personnel, the very first item on our personnel. Rachel Teal.
Okay.
And that should just be adjusted to Community Ed.
Superintendent Dean.
Yes, Director Johnson is correct. The hire is for the Community Ed and is not the assistant gymnastics coach for the high school. It is not. It is a Community Ed instructor.
Sounds good. Thank you. So do we need to?
Make an amendment?
Make an amendment then to the consent personnel?
I believe, yes. I would like to make an amendment to the consent personnel portion of the consent agenda, and that would be the hire of Rachel Gilbert as the assistant gymnastics coach for Community Education.
All right, I have a motion on the floor from Ms. Johnson. Do I have a second?
Second, Beth Frasca.
So a second to amend the consent personnel item. I have a first and a second. Any discussion on that? No further discussion. I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, so now we have the consent agenda for personnel, which is item number four B, that has been modified and updated. And now we do have a motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda as newly amended with this clarification from Ms. Johnson. Any further discussion or comment? Pending no further discussion or comment, I'll call for a vote regarding the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, the consent agenda carries as amended unanimously. Next, we'll go into item -- thank you, Jessica, for noting that. Next, we'll jump into item number five, which is fiscal responsibility, beginning with item number five A, which is the resolution of acknowledgement of contributions and donations. Superintendent Dean, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Edwards. You know, every month I say the same thing, that I'm just so overwhelmed by the generosity of the school district. But in this particular item this month, it just shows you how, you know, just a small contribution is just as valuable as a larger contribution in terms of the acknowledgement and the gratefulness that we have for all of our community who contribute to our programs. So, just wanted to call that out.
Thank you, Superintendent Dean. I would agree with your sentiments. Any comments related to this? Donations ranging from $20 up to $6,000 from our Northwest area J C's.
Yeah.
And we have a very generous, kind, and giving community that the schools rely heavily upon, our foundation. With that, I would take a motion related to the acknowledgement of contributions resolution that was presented in your board packet this evening.
I'll make a motion to approve the acknowledgement of contributions resolution as stated in the agenda.
All right, I have a first from Ms. Johnson. Do I have a second?
I will second.
Second from Ms. Neeland. I have a first and a second. Any further discussion or comment? Tending no further discussion or comment. Due to this being a resolution, I will call for a roll call vote. Brayden Anderson.
Aye.
Eric Gordy.
Aye.
Beth Frasca.
Aye.
Jenny Neeland.
Aye.
Jessica Johnson.
Aye.
Amy Edwards. Aye. Resolution carries as presented. All right, next we will move into -- thank you. Next, we'll move into item number five B, which is our ICS update. This time, I'll call upon Mr. Ryan Hoffman from ICS, who's been working with our community members as well as building out some projected and future facilities planning ideas. The intent of this evening is to bring you up to speed with the work that the ICS team has been doing. And Superintendent Dean, is there anything else that you would like to tee up before we turn it over to Mr. Hoffman?
No, I think the board is familiar with Mr. Hoffman. He's presented to us before, and tonight is just one more step in the facilities planning process.
Great, wonderful. So we'll turn it over to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Edwards. We -- good. So yes, here to give another update, and this is a culmination by any means of work done, but as previously stated, you know, we have done a lot of work with district staff, administration, community members, with meetings and surveys and all sorts of good stuff. So we're getting down to the point where we're starting to look at all this information and what's it telling us and how to pick a path forward. So tonight, we're going to look at some very draft conceptual solutions that I put together. Again, the purpose of this is to kind of get your creative juices flowing, and you guys can be part of this, and we'll forego that or have that be a bigger part of the discussion in the next meeting, most likely. But we'll look at some of those draft conceptual solutions and what they mean and what other things could come out of them. We previously also looked at what we call, ICS calls a school outline, so develop that based on all the needs that we've heard thus far. So we'll see what that means and what that looks like, and how that fits into, okay, what do we prioritize as high priority, medium priority, low priority, and what does that mean for the long-range plan ahead, and then what the next steps are. So we'll call from a quick update today, probably more work here in the next month, we may have some more time together. So what's it on here is a graphical, I'll call it, representation of all the needs that we've seen or heard at the elementary school. So this may, in first blush, look like, okay, we have a plan of some sort of project at the elementary school. That's not what this is. It's just showing you what we've heard of areas of need within the elementary school and the work that comes now as we prioritize what that actually means. So we start to assign spatial relationships with them, with the needs. We start to assign dollar amounts with needs if that involves a renovation or a construction of some sort. So here at the elementary school, we'll just go through that first, and then we will hit the middle school and the high school. So if you have a quick question or problem, let's get that in the open, but I'll try to do my best to describe it here. The elementary school was relatively simple as far as identified needs. We talked about special education needs there, kind of providing dedicated space or more space for special education. More focus on arts programming spaces. It's an arts magnet school, so what can we do within the building to really focus on that and to bring attention to the arts? Outdoor classroom, again, kind of with the performance and things like that within the elementary school, there's some space that they feel would be appropriate to have an outdoor classroom. A performance space, again, being with the arts magnet, something that's needed at the elementary school. There's also deferred maintenance and things like that that aren't necessarily going to be represented on a plan like this, but were also identified as needs. So we start to look at this and part of the previous work that we've done, we talked about demographics and the growth of the district, and some significant growth, not only in the next 10 years, but the years after that. So what does that mean ultimately for the elementary school and the district as a whole? So as we know, we've got early childhood currently being housed in an area at the elementary school that as growth happens, that space might be needed to dedicate to the elementary school program itself, which would show that having displaced early childhood at some point. Again, these are concepts that we're talking about, not plans that have been made. But if that domino were to fall, that might offset some of the other needs that I've identified at the elementary school, such as special education and arts. So the areas identified there as special education and arts, and those green and blue areas are currently where the early childhood programs sit. So there's space there to kind of hit those areas if and when that domino will fall. Again, you can see the site plan there, potentially some locations of outdoor classrooms, a potential performance, space addition, festival stage, or some sort of multi-purpose performance area that could potentially fit a gymnasium station as well. So, long story short, all the needs identified kind of shown here on the plan. And what this helps us do as we move forward is we have identified a space, so it allows us to get some square footage. That square footage allows us to understand what kind of impact it might be if we need to renovate or change that space to meet that specific need. And that's what we're doing, is we're trying to quantify all these. It wasn't much at the -- this is the upper level of the elementary school there. Moving into the middle school, some more needs are identified at the middle school. All the people listening, we get the school outline here in the end of the presentation, but the big boulders here were secured entries at the middle school to have a check-in ability for visitors, both the district office and the middle school office. Cafeterias severely undersized, so growing some space for the cafeteria for kids to eat lunch. Similar to the elementary school, we talked about STEM programming. It's STEM, since it's a STEM-focused school, getting more areas within that building that are STEM-focused, and there's all sorts of different labs and things like that that could be thought about, but again, a space needed for that. Special education is also noted at the middle school. And when we're looking at that, the gymnasium space as well, being small for the capacity of that building in the current moment and future moment. I'm going to go down to the lower level here so you can see, again, security weight, there's an area at that lower level that's highlighted in kind of, I'll call it turquoise or bluish area that's underutilized right now, that's kind of storage and locker room space that isn't used for much, but is potential real estate that could be used for future expanded programs, especially again, as we think about capacity and enrollment increases within the district. The district office obviously is located on this lower level, too. Coming from the high school, we've learned that there's some needs that the administrative space at the high school would show benefit if some of the district office personnel were not located in the high school and moved back to the actual district office, provide some efficiencies with those types of departments and free up some space in the high school as well. So there is an area in the lower level of the middle school that we could expand some offices for district office personnel and recreate or reorganize maybe a large conference room, meeting space that could potentially use district-wide for, you know, in-service and teaching and learning instruction as well. But thinking again of that enrollment in the future and what this space might look like, there might be benefits to having more special education space in the middle school, which would fit well in the lower level here, along with expanded programming as well. So that's not dictated or depicted here on this plan, but it's one of those things that we want to make sure that we're paying attention to, that this is the tightest building of the three buildings as far as capacity goes with enrollment. It's right now, it's kind of right there. So expanding some classrooms within the middle school is something that is probably more pressing than the other facilities at this point, especially as enrollment continues to increase. What we did, it's kind of hidden in there, you can see there's three kind of stars. Recreating that or creating that special education kind of area would take over two large classrooms right now that are basically equal-sized classrooms in the middle school compared to all the other classrooms. But there's, if we take a third large-sized classroom in the middle school, divide it in half to keep it equal-sized with all the rest of the classrooms, and then there's a computer lab that is actually not, no longer a computer lab, but is the open room. We now have those three classrooms and a place to go. So a relatively easy move, if you would, to keep all the classrooms that we currently have there, but a lot of work with that solution. So again, just some ideas and thoughts about how that might look, what it might look like, and to start thinking about what the priorities are as we move forward here. You can see the site plan, some of the other needs there at the middle school. Traffic situation at the middle school is one that is, I'll call it undesirable, maybe is the best way to put it. So up top, the green space at the middle school is higher than the middle school. There's significant grade change there, but definitely putting a bus loop up top there and having buses separating from the traffic out front of the school, which would be a good safety item to think about. Maybe that's parent drop-off. Again, we can talk about what that ultimate solution looks like, but it's something to consider and think about, that we can separate those two items, the bus drop-off and the parent drop-off, separate it more than what it currently are now. Something, creating something like that, tying in with a potential gym addition to create another accessible entrance into the facility so all students can enter through that area. So those things are stuff we think about as we put these solutions together, right? And then there's a little kind of a, I don't know, that is a brownish teardrop that's relocating a field that we would displace because of the bus loop. And those are things that we could, again, prioritize whether or not that would have to happen right away or if it needs to happen at all. But just, again, showing that all these needs are there and how we might put off each other in a future solution. Even the high school, a little less complicated here, but the CTE area, green up there, is an area that's underutilized right now, so there's potential for that program as it expands. You, along with just about every other district in the state or nation, are very much expanding that career and tech education programming, and there's space within the high school that would be prime for that expansion. So some areas shown there. One of the considerations here, again, it might be an outside consideration, but the gymnastics area at the middle school, if that was actually used as the middle school to expand gym at the middle school instead of building an addition, we'd have to relocate gymnastics somewhere. Maybe there's a thought of putting an addition onto the high school for a multi-purpose area that could house the gymnastics program and some capacity. One of the needs along with the high school was potential locker room adjustments, especially for, you know, current kind of structure of locker rooms and how they operate in today's world, which is different than, you know, when the original high school was built. So it gives us the opportunity to potentially package those together and create a space that kind of fits all those needs there. You can't really see it, but in the middle of the high school, there's the gray, that's the media center. It's just a underutilized and not well-put-together space for them right now, and adding more flexible learning and individualized learning, there's potential options there as well. So again, all within the walls there, except potential multi-purpose space, but, you know, the high school has some space also identified in the field area as well, that you can see on the site plan, it's kind of small up there, it's a little red square, but kind of dual purpose thought. There is a team room that would service the football field and track for athletics when needed, but then since, again, it's a multi-tiered elevation site, maybe underneath that is some storage or used for maintenance and things like that. So those are all the concepts and things that we've heard, kind of shown graphic, all thrown in all together all at once. Probably not all going to happen all together all at once, but we start to understand what that kind of looks like. So, this is super clear, but this now is all of those things that we've talked about, putting the line items with some sort of quantitative measures to them. So again, it's taking square foot, it's taking the cost of construction, the completed renovation, and it's putting them all together. And the first column there with the green squares is showing kind of all the needs. So if we hit it all, here's what a potential, you know, impact would be. Not at all like is intended, so draft, not a proposed solution here. But it's just saying, okay, that's all the needs that we've identified thus far. These will probably change a little bit as we move forward and get a little bit more detail and get everybody's minds wrapped around them. But what I have there and what we'll continue to do in our next work session, we have some time to really dive into it, that column there is labeled option one. We'll probably have option two, option three, option four, multiple options, and we'll be able to select kind of off the menu what things we want as high priority, and that's what we're going to address first, and what does that mean, and what's the next domino or next priority, and what does that mean. And then what we'll do as we move forward is engage that financial advisor, and we'll help identify what funding sources can help provide a solution for each of these options. There'll be multiple funding sources, multiple ways to go about it. You have LTFM, which just deals with deferred maintenance. You have Lease Levy, which deals with some new space. You have Referendum that deals with additions and new buildings potentially. So we'll go through all of those different scenarios and what that looks like and what that means and the potential impact, because ultimately what the public's going to know is or want to know is how, if it does impact them, and how long, and all those few things. So we'll start to identify what that actually looks like. So we'll, we'll start to identify what that actually looks like for the district and then we'll put together some analysis of that. So at this point, long story short, as we've done a lot of work to identify, have all the needs as possible we can, we started to conceptualize some thoughts around those needs. Our work here over the next month with this group will be to, okay, let's prioritize, to really get that laid out. And then we'll come back and we'll say, based on those priorities here, the options we see, and here's how we think we can get there potentially funding-wise. So we're not to the finish line yet, but we're, we're kind of crossing that last turn and then we see it.
All right, so any questions for Mr. Hoffman? Jessica, Ms. Johnson?
So I just have a question regarding the media center renovation, because we just went through media center renovation at the high school. So I'm just curious what it is that ICS is seeing in comparison to what we already put in. It's a $1.1 million renovation here, so just.
It's, it's a perfect one to, to get more involved in, right? So we, we talked about individualized learning and what that looks like and how spaces interact and flow with, with the occupants. Again, a need that was, was identified was that space is something that can be improved. So digging into that, especially when we look at, okay, $1.1 million, it's a, I know it's a quantity in square feet, I can tell that it is, if you look at it, but, and a renovation cost. So it's just very simple math, right? It's not, oh, we have this type of wall system or furniture or, you know, those types of things. It's not the depth that we've gone right now, we'll get there. But it's, it's identifying, we've talked about that space with people at the middle school, that it can be improved. We know how big it is, we know about how typical construction costs go with spaces like that. So there's the, there's the math. And if that ends up being, okay, we talked about that in that little priority compared to special education space at the middle school, then we, we just put, we keep it on the list, we know it's there, we've talked about it, we don't want to lose track of it, but it becomes a nail in the road.
Thank you. Good question. Any other questions?
I have a couple. All right, so one, I'll just say gratitude is nice to see some of the, you know, the middle school has been under a bit of a space constraint. For cafeteria space, the flow of traffic is challenging at best for drop-off and pickup. So it's nice to see that along with some indoor large motor movement space, i.e. gyms, to be available for the kids in the middle school. So it's nice to see those lifted up in the plan for sure. Not everybody in the audience might know that kids' bus to the high school to use the gym during school days. So nice to see that kind of being accounted to. Knowing that this was on the agenda, a community member actually reached out to me and said, "Has the district ever considered adding in pool facilities? And what's the, what's the position of ICS on that?" And I'm not going to put you on the spot right now, knowing that we have future conversations, but I do want, I will lift that up. A community member brought it up. We've got an aging population, water aerobics and things like that, along with young kids and families coming into the community. So it's a large liability, all of those sort of things go through my mind, but I am lifting it up as a community member, literally reached out to me asking.
Sure. If you're, if you're asking my opinion on aquatic spaces, the, the difficulty with aquatic spaces up to the district of your size is the, the district would use typically an aquatic space much differently than the public would use an aquatic space. Districts would have an aquatic space based on swim team and, and that kind of use where public has kind of more splash-paddy, warm water, you know, come-and-play type spaces. They don't necessarily typically own the same body of water. So it's very difficult to, to say, okay, yeah, well, we're going to build an eight-way competition swimming pool for our swim team, which we can talk about that later. But the, the community, yes, they can come in and swim last, but that's about the use of it. And it doesn't provide them kind of the, maybe what they're thinking, a community center-type pool we provide. So districts of this size typically, that's a, that's a joint venture with a city or, or some other entity to help put structure around that and share in what is an immense first cost, capital cost to build a structure. And then secondly, a very steep operational cost annually. So, you know, conversation about pool happens all the time. People, it's Minnesota, people, we, we want our kids to learn how to swim, so it is, it's important. When you get down to the cost of it and, you know, again, I don't want to project, but you start placing priorities of what you're doing and the cost associated with an aquatic structure, it's, it'll be difficult.
Yeah.
But not, not to say that if you don't get enough, you get enough support, you know, it might change.
No, thank you, and I think it's just helpful to hear kind of how other communities have strategized around it with partnerships with city and all of that. So I just wanted to lift that question up. And then another question that I have for you is on the high school model, because obviously we're sitting in the community center right now. And it had, I think it's right here, potentially a bump out for additional gym, gymnasium or multipurpose space. Is there any possibility of making the actual fieldhouse larger or are we constrained by existing?
There's always a possibility, right? I could, I did not look at the structure of that and just extending that out, but it's, so that's again, a perfect example of, okay, I'm, I'm knowing a square footage that the gymnastics program currently is using. We want to make sure that we're at least covering that in a space here. So that's the, that's the space I'm considering, whether it's an addition that happens right here or an extension of the existing gyms is probably six of one, half of the other in concept. So think of it as that space as opposed to a solution being built right there.
Great.
Does that make sense?
Totally, thank you for that. And then the two, I think there's $2 million for the flooring of the community center or something like that, because it's bubbling up. I know we've asked this before, but again, just to lift it up in public, is, does that, does that cover the spring issue of why that comes in or whatever is causing it to bubble?
Yep, the, the deferred maintenance line item there was $2 million, so that floor is not all of that. There's also other mechanical needs and things like that, that, that is cool. But again, it's probably, that's, so yes, it's, it's hopefully figuring out the solution to that problem. The deferred maintenance line item is one, as we'll get through, and then I will continue to work on figuring out what the highest priority needs there are. I mean, we could spend, oh, you know, significantly more than that at each of the buildings, but that deferred maintenance item will fit into one other priorities as well, because some of those priorities might actually take care of some deferred maintenance. So it's, it's a, it's a difficult puzzle to kind of weave together as we talk about renovations and spaces, especially in the middle school that knocks out a bunch of deferred maintenance, because we're, we're all inherently in renovations to take care of it. So we can lessen our priorities of the middle school deferred maintenance, which might then free up the ability to add more deferred maintenance to the high school or middle school. So yeah, it's, it's one of those that we have in those big chunks, roofing, mechanical flooring, that's what's in those deferred maintenance items on each of those facilities. But just, we want to refine that and get an actual list.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Gratitude to you and Mr. Moore, gratitude to you as well, even latched up with Mr. Hoffman in developing this plan. And I imagine that our administrative leaders in the buildings have also been a part of the planning, too. So thank you to everyone that has informed where we are today.
Yes.
So thank you, we'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Yes.
All right. Very good. All right, next, we will go into our agenda item six, which is high student achievement. And I'll call upon our middle school principal, Dr. Anderson Hume, for the principal's report as well as the greenhouse update. Welcome, Dr. Anderson Hume.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm all distracted around washing, I'm going up in the programs. I'm all excited. And that can feel like a small, wonderful thing.
Oh, thank you.
Thanks, James.
See, I'm being sneaky.
Rover, Rover. So evening, everyone, thank you for the time and letting me be here to go over our building goals. We have, I have five SMART goals to talk about before we talk about the greenhouse. This is the strategic plan and our strategic directions. And you know that I'm not going to talk to you about anything that you haven't already talked about before. The middle school has been on a trajectory since 2008, I think, and, and just kind of started from the ground up and, and just went through the whole thing with power standards and assessments and really identifying the most important things that our kids need to know to be able to succeed at the next level. And we've just been going for it. And, and again, I'm just going to start with the first one, there's five of them, improving educational programs and partnerships. One of the, we've been given a lot of opportunity to look at programming and look at what we do thanks to COVID. And one of them in, in this ICS stuff, because the timing is really good on it, in looking at what we do as a STEM magnet school, we are touring so many kids right now for next year. Like, we're touring two, three kids a week, and I know that Brenda's doing the same, I don't know about the high school, but, because they're very specific about what they want, and they definitely want something different. And they don't want what our suburban neighbors have in either direction, and they want, you know, what we have, which is good, that's how we want it. And looking at that as an opportunity to say, okay, let's repackage, let's reemphasize, let's refocus. And I don't know if you folks know this, but Minnesota is one of the only places that has four biomes. Do you remember what biomes are? Come on, it's Minnesota's science. So coniferous forest, deciduous forest, prairie grasslands, high grass, aspen. I always forget the end of that. The plants, high grass, aspen, parsnip. So we love our fours, right, we have four quarters, four grade levels, four specialists. We're going to regroup according to the four biomes and give each grade level a biome and look at as an opportunity to maybe refresh our building a little bit and have, so Janet Henderson is from the Northland, right? And so she's doing pine trees, she's already claimed that, and even have that part of the building take on the spirit of the northern part of Minnesota, right? And to have more buying with kids and just have more fun, and the timing of it is just really nice. And so our goal is during this school year, all of our teaching staff will participate in building, grade, and team-level magnet study to redetermine key priorities. So what is it that we want to be, who is it that we want to be in our STEM and BLM code? And obviously, we're in a high greenhouse about that, too. So next, at this training, our second goal is about aligning collective training, response protocols, safety, security. And so I got to be a part of a team this summer that we did five different training sessions for school safety. And we put people in positions of having to make decisions without knowing that they are going to have to make decisions. So we surprised our audience and, and made them aware of some of the decisions that we had to make with educators sometimes in classrooms full of kids. And, you know, up the ante a little bit, and we want to take one more step yet this year, and that one more step is to include an evacuation drill. And so our goal is to make sure 90% of the middle school staff will participate in the training, including evacuation, as provided by the, you know, the different trainers. And so we've got that part done, and we have plans in place to get the second part done, we've been discussing that at the end. And I'm pretty sure you're going to hear similar things from my school, not just yours, but others from there. There is improving supports for students on their learning. Again, we have multiple opportunities. We have Ben Bonner with our new TSS coordinator. So he'll come in and provides us an opportunity to streamline, redesign, if necessary, update our IT protocol to refer students, right, for extra services. And so we're looking at that, we're looking at access, the middle school has two hours of access help during our boost class. So we have half an hour, fifth grade, sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade in the middle of the day, looking at boost. Again, you know, some of the things we've done with boost in the past, we have a focus area of Monday's math, you see his language charts. And the teachers are pre-teaching or re-teaching specific skills for that. I have a new stop-and-think person, Luanne Adams, I probably swiped her from Special Ed and pulled her into stop-and-think. And so that's prompted a whole bunch of new programming with that. And then targeted services, which we've been talking about off and on, and we'll go on going right now. But our goal is to look at all of these opportunities through an equity lens. As a staff, we've been looking at the book called Dream Peavers, and it's about how teachers can inspire kids in the classroom. And so we want to look at all of those areas through an equity lens. So that's our third goal. Two more for you. The fourth is strengthening structural practices, processes, and curriculum. And again, this is our standard piece for you, it's been on hold since the pandemic. And so we are currently on a zero-four scale in our fifth and sixth grade and an A through F on our seventh and eighth. And it's been that way for a very long time, puts our building on two different calendars, which is tough. The zero-four for us doesn't allow us to communicate with kids. What's a three? Why is that not a four? Why is it not a two? It's just not enough to tell kids where they are, where the standards are. A through F, I'm just a three and one, as a middle school kid, that's tough. If we go zero to eight, it gives our teachers an awful lot more communication room and prepares our kids for ID, because the zero to eight is the ID. So a zero would be no attempt, and an A, what we're talking about is leadership and a particular skill, over and above. When we had the Monday professional development, we looked at behavior skills, because we want to assess school appropriate behavior, but not academics. So we want to allow teachers to talk about what kids are doing behaviorally that impacts their learning, but we don't want it to be part of the academic grade. But I use that to teach teachers how to write rubers, because rubber grading is a heavy lift for teachers. And behavior's on the mind right now, so they, you know, what behaviors are important, what does that look like at a zero, what does it look like at an A? And so just practice as a group to write those things. So finishing with zero and eight, getting that ready for next year, that's the heavy lift goal number four. And last but not least, improving shared community and staff awareness and engagement. This is going to be about greenhouse, and our goal, our SMART goal this year is to have at least three purposeful interactions with our greenhouse, with the public. We already had one, that homecoming, we bought 150 moms that I thought, what in the world, we're going to have 150 moms? They sold out in less than two hours. I didn't even get a mom, and I helped unload the truck. And so that excites us, right? We have that energy there, and we've been talking about, you know, we're, we're in the greenhouse now, we have things happening, and we're, we've talked an awful lot about what this building is going to be, so we're going to slide right into the greenhouse report, if you like that segue. And since the very beginning, we've, we've wanted this greenhouse to be different. Every, there's lots of schools with greenhouses, right? Where the kids take the seed out of the bag, and then they dump the dirt out of the bag, and then they take the blotter out of the, you know, spigot, and then they dump the flour. That's not the greenhouse that we want to have. The greenhouse we want to have is the, the kind of greenhouse where our kids make their own dirt, and they put their own worms in the dirt, and they study that. And they take the temperature, and they look at different kinds of dirt, and they chart the dirt, and those are all real world skills, and they have those comparisons. And then they get to goal set and think, well, the future and what that dirt's going to do, and then we have dirt in the spring. And then when spring comes, then we're working on summer, because what if middle school kids not as well? Think about the future, set goals, think, think beyond about here, right? And so it's about connecting them with the earth, connecting them with their learning, connecting them with each other, but about everything being a process, right? I don't want it to be a greenhouse, we talked about it being a learning lab. So right now, we're hoping to get 15 tables in there, about 60 bins, and some dirt and some scraps from the cafeteria, and some, that's a good idea, we used to buy these bizarre worms, I don't know how many you had to bring home, had to have worms on refrigerators from your kids' autumn exploratory days. Anyone? No, well, I bet you did. Or they did little yogurt containers full of compost. I had those worms in my house for two years, I think, that's a good idea. Well, there was a man who moved into Ben's house, I don't know if anybody knows who Ben Fontana is, he's a Rockford graduate. And he and his wife Sierra started a business, and it's called Fruitful Land Company or the Fruitful Land Co., and they do edible landscaping. And they just happened to move in just a few houses down from the middle school. And he is really super excited about making dirt with our kids. And it just so happens, he has a teaching license in teaching history and lots of time on his hands in the winter, and it's. on his hands in the winter, and it's... And he wants to work with us and teach this stuff and these real world skills and as the first step in getting our Greenhouse working. And the other things that we're going to talk about is, like, water. We talked about bringing water in. How are we going to do something different, right? We talked about power, we talked about solar panels. Well, water, we've had a couple different people, we've put together a committee. You can't just have a greenhouse, right? It takes people who go to school and have greenhouse management degrees to run a greenhouse. I don't want to run a greenhouse. But there's lots of people in our community that have experience of greenhouse, and we've been meeting with them all summer, and they have some great ideas about how to catch water that's not hooking up to the city water, chlorinated water, catching water from our roof and having kids help design a catchment system and using the E, the engineering in our STEM, and looking at how the water cycle can be captured and used to grow food. That's the S, right? Not just learning about the water cycle from the textbook and using the math to measure and create the system. So that's the kind of greenhouse that we want to have. We want to have a Greenhouse that other schools come and they want to see our Greenhouse. And we keep pulling those kids out of the metro area who are looking for something different. So that's where we are. So you're going to start seeing dirt growing in the Greenhouse, I think, for right now, and that's going to be our service.
Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Anderson Hume from the board? Okay, thank you, Dr. Anderson Hume. All right. Next, moving on to item number six B, which is our high school principal's report and our ID update. I'll call on Principal Menard for his update this evening. Welcome. Good evening.
Thank you. Good evening. It's my pleasure to join you today to talk about how we've started our school year at the high school. First of all, we're back, and we're slowly getting used to things as normal. And some of the things we talk about tonight are some very purposeful things that we set forth in August at our teacher workshop days to make sure that we help the students ease into it as best we can and in ways that are manageable for our staff, our students, and our families. So we, too, have mapped out strategic goals for our building that are in direct lockstep with the district strategic plan. The first area is improving our educational programs and partnerships, and this year it is all about the growth of the ID diploma program and career-related program, as well as hopefully the impending verification for our middle years program, set to have its verification visit this coming March. So supporting the ID MYP verification visit and launching the DP and CP courses. We have our first exams for the DP coming this spring. There are eight students registered for those exams so far. Rockford High School staff will engage in ongoing PD with ID roundtables. That's... There's a Minnesota organization called MNIB where our teachers can partner up with seasoned ID teachers to help enhance units, prepare for examinations, discover the rhythm of how successful ID courses navigate. Internal meetings, so we have a really intentionally structured PLC time as well as morning meeting time for ID, and some of my staff meeting time is dedicated to... Well, it's two very different realities right now in high school. We've got teachers who are actually teaching in ID classrooms, and then we have more of our ninth and 10th grade teachers who are still kind of developing the plans and running them by continually with some of our ID consultants to make sure that we are presenting our best selves when it comes time for the verification visit. So as you can imagine, that requires some small group work and maybe some crossover, too, saying, well, the DP teachers, well, this is how I developed a course outline exactly a year ago. Here are some things that helped me, and kind of sharing back in that way. Also, external trainings are beginning to ensure ongoing fidelity to ID standards. So we have 12 new staff members at the high school, and that's a lot of new staff members, especially as you're trying to onboard an external program. And so what we did is we looked at their workload and some of the trainings that are coming up. There are some virtual trainings that are available, which are taught in real time, which is more desirable than some of the modular trainings that ID was offering during the throes of the pandemic. But also, live trainings are going to be happening again through this February. So we're looking at getting some of our new teachers into trainings this coming spring, of course, sensitive to the needs of substitute teachers and things like that. So we're trying to find the very best times to send, especially our new folks, into those trainings. Part of the continuous improvement includes networking with the MNIB partner schools, building collaboration efforts with existing community partners, and building additional partnerships with local organizations. And so what we've done is we've reached out not only to our existing community partners, which were a requirement of the verification for DP and CP, but also what other community partners can we join? How can we get our students out there to see and experience some of these real world connections, as well as getting our new teachers that first blush that relationship with some of the community partners so that they know what a partner would... They can answer their curriculum as they begin planning it, as we continue to implement some of these additional courses, which we'll go through a little bit. Section B, aligning and developing proactive training and response protocol for increased safety and security. We, too, aim to have 100% of our staff Alice trained. We... It's our goal to have some unconventional drills, I call them. So we already had a fire drill as students were trying to enter the building at 7:50 a.m., and that caused great panic and confusion, which I think was really good. This year, it's my goal not to surprise students, because it's a lot just to come back to school five days a week and just ask them. But also, I don't want them to... You know, they're not in the practice of doing drills either, and so especially not at 7:50 in the morning when they can be surprised by anything. So we did, we had to make sure we had somebody at every entrance saying, this is a drill? Everything's fine? You're going to go to school in a few minutes? It worked out fine. We're also probably going to block some entrances during a fire drill in the spring. We're also going to attempt an evacuation, as well as Dr. Anderson Hume mentioned, just to have students thinking in the exact same way that we were forced to think by some of our fellow administrators in August when we were just sitting, sitting and getting a workshop on Alice, and then the next thing I do is some nerve darts for my head. So it's very important to have that authenticity of these drills, because if we don't, on a very serious note, it then becomes very commonplace for them, another thing that they have to do, and then they're talking during fire drills, and then they're not noticing barricades and what if? And so it's our goal to ratchet up those drills in the event that there is a variable in a very real event. Improving supports for students and their learning. This is the one we've really been working on. As students come in, and I'll tell a brief story. I went to a dog park that borders Lake Sarah the other day with my dog, and it was very muddy. And I don't have great coordination anyway. Ten years directing theater, I stopped playing baseball after they learned to throw a curveball. So I'm watching my step, and I thought about this goal as I was slipping in the mud. And the thing we're talking about the most at the high school is, we don't know where the gaps are. And so we are slipping through mud, and we think we're going to slip, and we get great traction. And then almost all of my postevaluations that I've conducted in the first quarter, that's mentioned in some fashion. Well, I didn't know this activity was going to take 50 minutes. I had budgeted 20. Or the opposite. I thought we were going to spend the whole block talking about this, and they're already doing it. So we flew through it in 10 minutes. So a lot of us discovering where those gaps are and how to address them in real time. And so our goal is kind of twofold here. We've got two goals under letter C. But in the 2021 school year, our goal is to decrease the percentage of students failing courses school by, by 5% compared to last year. We also aim to reduce the number of IT referrals, usually students who are struggling and failing, through refining our processes and using tools for student self-advocacy. So we're teaching self-advocacy through our Rocket Block. And in addition, we're using STAR data. This will be the first year that we can compare growth data to last year. Last year was a baseline year, as you recall. And in addition, we have homework help after school every Wednesday open to every student. It's a little bit easier for the non-athlete, but we're offering that opportunity. We do have an ATSS professional who is part-time of her contract. She's pulling students out during Rocket Block and at the latter portion of some of the instructional blocks when they're doing their work primarily, to work with them on their reading proficiency. In addition, we're going to go back to something we also learned during COVID. One of the most effective structures to our Rocket Block, which I can remind you is kind of an advisory community building study hall period for our high school on Tuesdays and Thursdays. One of the most effective ways that we could intervene and help students was to pull out the students who needed the most assistance in what we call humanities and STEM. So on Tuesdays, beginning on Thursday, I'm sorry, beginning on Thursday, we're going to be starting with our STEM Rocket Block boost, to use the term from the middle school, to give them a little extra push in science and math. This begins this Thursday. And then on Tuesdays thereafter, we'll be working humanities with their English and their social studies. Last year, that led to the most significant gains where students exited failing grades. I think we were able to do it for a quarter between Thanksgiving and the end of the first semester, and 74 students were able to graduate out of boost into a regular Rocket Block. And so we have about the same number of students right now that are in that boat, and we're able to see them all come out of that and be able to have a regular Rocket Block. Also, you know, they're learning how to manage some of that study time. I mean, it's not a skill that they have yet. And so if you walk into different Rocket Blocks, you'll see different corners of the room doing different things. And some of the students cherish and need those, it ends up being about 50 minutes of study time when we get through activities and my announcements and things like that. And other students need that time to decompress. And so we're also learning how students most benefit from that time, and we're also trying to decide what we're okay with. We had... It was a really honest meeting this morning about Rocket Block. It's not what I thought it would be. Well, maybe that's okay. Maybe they need something different than we thought they did. And so again, we're just continuing to learn and grow this in the first year that they're fully backed with this sort of intervention study hall community building advising type. By fourth quarter, we're talking a little bit about mindfulness and social emotional learning. We've learned that our students appreciate some of the ways that we stop and take breaks, and we do have a mindfulness minute on our morning announcements. We're going to ask every teacher to incorporate a mindfulness activity at least once a week by the fourth quarter so that students know and can really count on having that brain break and having that ability to get up and stretch or, you know, connect with your body if you're feeling stressed or tense in any way, aware, and focus on it and try to just deep breathe, whatever those strategies might be, so that they can count on that in every class. We're finding that to be very important, and students value that. So we continue to capitalize that as we move to educate teachers about some of the different strategies they can use. Letter D, strengthening instructional practices, processes, curriculum, and assessment. I want to go back to that ID goal. As we work through the road to verification of MYP and become a ninth through 12th grade endorsed International Backwater World School, no doubt that will strengthen our instructional practices, processes, curriculum, and assessment. It's one thing to try to become an ID school. It's another thing to learn how to get through the curriculum and test as an ID teacher. And we have, again, the two that will be testing this year in terms of biology at the standard level and economics at the standard level are learning as they're going and leaning heavily on some of their MNIB cohorts. Letter E, improving parent community and staff awareness and engagement. It was also really important to us that students come back, that we finally get them back and bring them back and let them know that we're glad they're back instead of just starting school. And so this was a teacher-led initiative that by the end of the first quarter, 100% of students will have a mutual strong connection or high-quality connection with at least one staff member. A strong connection will be measured by utilizing the DOT activity, looking for students selecting at least one staff member and the staff member selecting the same student. While there were some delays due to COVID in the administration, and so we were not able to complete this by the first quarter, but the staff has completed their portion of the DOT activity. And step two will be sending the very same survey out to students. And what will be fascinating is to see, do we have students who feel a connection with a staff member that's not recognizing it? And so then I'll have individual meetings with those staff members to say, this child is really counting on you, so you need to capitalize on this. Whatever you've done, you've captivated them, and you need to make sure that you made the connection, or at least know and acknowledge that. And then, of course, addressing any gaps that we may have. Are there students that feel that they're not connecting with anybody? Are there students that are purposely trying to slip through the cracks? And how do we address that? And who can we reach out to? And who might think that they have inroads to making a more quality connection? This in a way that, you know, life is hard, and this year is hard, and it's hard for our students. And so we've had some really significant medical issues of our parents. And the way I tell teachers is, can I send the kid to your room and pull you out of class so that you can get them ready to go back to school? And they have identified several connections where we can do that. And so I'm eager to see the student connection close the loop and make sure that we have every kid covered. In addition, as we look out at the broader community, we're looking at community partnerships. So as we look forward to sort of rebuilding the career-related program, we're certainly going to get some more teachers trained, but also we have had three field trips to different facilities in the region, those primarily dealing with an apple orchard, looking going to a manufacturing company, and then a landscaping company as well. Letting students see the product of what they might be learning in the real world and looking at bringing it to the next level. So is there a way that we can officially partner with these businesses? Is there a way that we can increase the rigor of our OJT program? Is there a way that we can possibly build a pipeline for employment in some of these places that are so starved for labor that we have their answer? And he or she is 16, but if you get a hook now, they might be excited to work for you after they graduate from Rockford High School. So we're really excited about the momentum of the growth of that program to kind of round out the 11th and 12th grade experience for our students. But also, without forgetting that, we have... Our primary focus is the MYP authorization so that we can become a ninth through 12th grade ID world school.
All right. Well, thank you for that update. I know you've got more to share with us, but I'm just going to say one thing. I am... All of the goals are monumentally important, and you got me with letter D. So thank you. Kids feeling connected to adults that care in their high school experience matters and creating a way to ensure that those connections are found and valued and cultivated is critical. So just, I just wanted to call it out and just express gratitude for really identifying that as a goal for your building. So thank you. So are we moving on then to 6C? Mr. Hart?
Sure. Actually, I had some ID...
Let's do ID. All right? Yeah, that is really short to add. Like, what's... Yeah, okay, let's go onto ID then.
Here we go. ID. Again, kind of in two different worlds. We are an ID world school. We are authorized, and we've got students in ID classes. And as a result, we have to let the world know. And so you'll see it as you drive into our high school now. It's very much a part of our campus. It feels and looks a little bit more like a campus. And so cosmetic changes have been made. There's new ID and RHS signage. So in the front of the school, we have our new core values set by the district and the board. So thank you for that verbiage. I think it's a very impactful statement about who we are and what we're about as families drive into our front. And in the back, we have the 10 ID learner profiles with the ID logo. It's who we want our students to be about when they exit those doors with their diploma. So I think it's a really physical way to capture both the district goals and the goals of what we want our students to become for ID. That's outside. Continued PD, the whole focus area one in the first quarter, teachers' PLCs are devoted to IB-related professional development. And on November eighth, we brought in a consultant to work on training with our new staff, and we focused on the preparation for our upcoming verification visits discussed earlier. And that consultant has been very instrumental in really drilling down and figuring out the individual needs of teachers. You know, is it planning? Is it understanding the assessments? Is it wrapping your head around an interdisciplinary even in how do I work with another teacher from another department to enhance the learning for my students? Content sense, logistical sense, all of it, right? Because it's different brains. And then international mindedness. So now, as part of the international mindedness community myself, we created a theme for each month to create awareness about other cultures. And so we have artifacts that are displayed in our media center. We have different books that are featured by authors of that region or that culture. And we have different games or different songs that we'll introduce to the students during Rocket Block, some trivia about the culture and so forth, really making a lived experience as much as we can at the high school on a monthly basis. MYP, the application was submitted. The matters to be addressed are MTPA have been reviewed and they're in the process of being worked on. We are confident that we'll be ready for a verification visit well before March of 2022. Our teachers are working hard on that. And like I said, we have a great consultant to help us there. The DP and CP programs have begun. I missed up my numbers. It's actually eighteen tests in econ and bio, and that's just the first deadline. Since our students don't know what they don't know this first year of IB, having lived through an inaugural year of IB, it's the most challenging to get them to dive in to the theoretical pool because they don't know. And so we're extending that deadline. There's actually three times that you can register. After this first cut, we have eighteen of those students registered in those two standard level courses. I want to back up though and mention the number eight that I mistakenly said about the test. We have eight students that are currently in pursuit of the full diploma. And I want you to know that's an unprecedented number of students for the total enrollment of our high school. Typically, you would see probably five would be a really good number for a school of about fifteen hundred. And so as a school a third of that size to have eight, it's a testament to the bravery of our students, their commitment to excellence. I also think it's going to be ongoing trust of the faculty that are in their care and are their instructors of record because they will lead them to be the first IB graduates. And so that's huge. And so thank you for supporting the program. And thank you to the students and their parents for inquiring and investigating and investing in this new program. Needful full diploma candidates have occurred. Continue to develop partnerships with Baker Park, Central Minnesota Manufacturing, as I mentioned before, and the manufacturing tour is upcoming. So those are the IB updates.
Mr. Menard, what year do kids have to declare that they're going to be a full diploma candidate?
Officially, it would be the spring of their sophomore year when they register for courses. It's probably the most opportune time for a student to give their official yes. What I would say to students is you probably have through that fifth day of classes, your junior year, if you wanted to mix and match, or if you've gone to college visits and you've learned over the summer, that it's a really valuable thing to add that on, then you may. Again, what's nice about IB, most challenging thing about IB is explaining IB. What's nice about IB is all the options that IB can afford you. So you have the full diploma, which obviously is the most advantageous but the most rigorous. And then you also have courses that you can choose. We call it kind of an à la carte menu. So if you're the student that really thrives in English and social studies, but you really want to stay away from the math and sciences, you can. But also what's interesting about the way that we're launching in Rockford is it's embedded in our ninth and tenth grade completely and into two of our required courses. So every student in Rockford is at least in an IB classroom for their eleventh grade English year and their eleventh grade biology year. We're currently not requiring them to take the test, but they're being exposed to the IB curriculum, let them create no matter, no matter what. And so it's those options that I like as a principal and a parent. And it's the opportunity to go as deeper as shallow as you want in the program. But yeah, sophomore year is the full container.
Any questions for Mr. Menard on the IB update? I'm seeing no questions. Next, should we go on to the next agenda? Okay. So I have number six, sixty is the approval of new RHS courses and descriptions for the 2022-2023 academic year. And I believe that you're set to present that. All right.
So our IB students are matriculating through the program. So we need to offer them more courses for their senior year. And/or you'll notice as we go throughout the program, some of the courses are standard level and we only offer it for one year. So they need a Rockford elective for that second year. And so all of these fall under that umbrella. If we look at social studies, that civics grade twelve is primarily an option for our current juniors taking IB economics at the standard level. They'll need a social studies elective to take their senior year. And there are some civics standards in the social studies curriculum in Minnesota that need to be hit. And so that's why we would propose that course. Science, we want to add another science option. So the DP physics SL takes on the role of an advanced physics in grade eleven. Mathematics, the DP applications and interpretations for grade eleven, that is a challenging math class, but not as challenging as the one we started this year, the ANA program. So it's a step down, but still difficult. Okay? So it gives our students a more approachable IB math class is probably the way to put it. Fine arts, we'd like to add the option of DP visual arts for the standard or higher level, starting in grade eleven. And that would be an option for students to take as one of their standard level courses with a little bit smaller portfolio and things of that nature, or the higher level version for two years as one of their HL options, again, affording them more options so in case they want to do the full program. DP music at the higher level for grades eleven and twelve, that's another fine arts course under that category six that we'd like to offer our students. And then in our business pathway, professional and prefer, excuse me, personal professional skills twelve, we will be teaching a personal professional skills eleven the spring semester. This would be an accompaniment to that in the fall of next year for those students that want to continue on in the career-related program. In addition, we'd like to operate a diploma program course called Business Management at the standard level for eleventh and twelfth graders.
All right. So board in your packets, you saw handouts on page fifty-five with the new core courses as well as program descriptions on pages fifty-six and fifty-seven. This is an action item. So I'll entertain either a motion or additional questions or comments for Mr. Menard.
I'll offer up a motion to approve the RHS new course description for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
All right, I have a first from Mr. Board. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
I have a second from Ms. Nealon. I have a first and a second. Any further discussion or comment? Hearing no further discussion or comment, I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. Sounds good. New course descriptions for twenty-two, twenty-three, hear your name on the slate. Thank you, Mr. Menard.
Thank you very much.
I think that's all of your agenda items this evening.
Thanks everyone.
Thank you. All right. Next, we'll move on to item number sixty, which is our Activities Director's Report. Call upon our Activities Director, Mr. Pratt. Welcome.
Thank you. Thanks for having me. Did I have a choice? Okay, well, fall season has concluded. We got, actually, we had a pretty good fall. I sent in the board report all the information. I'm just comparing some things in it. Boys and girls soccer, respectable years. Again, it's been, it's been a difficult time keeping our numbers up with soccer. And then we find out this year that Melissa Joseph has resigned. So she will no longer be coaching the girls' soccer program. But a big thank you to her because what she did with the soccer program and how she worked with the girls was so nice. And she felt that she left in some good hands with some good assistant coaches right now. So we're hoping we can step forward. The soccer continues to compete in every game and play hard. We just had some really, really difficult teams in our conference. Southwest Christian Boys won the state this year. I mean, that, you know, they were very good. Rockford cheer team, this fall, they're back. They came back this year with the full-time schooling and Denise Engelbreis took them to the MCCAs. They finished second in the Class A sideline cheer. They go there every year and they're so quiet about it. They don't really talk about it. They come back and they say, oh, well, we won. We came in second. We won overall. And you're just like, okay, let me know these things. So cross country, what a year for cross country, especially with the girls. The girls' conference champions, not sure they've done that for many, many years. Ruby Gifford finished the highest any female cross-country runner has ever finished in the state at eighteenth. She's only a ninth grader. And we held the conference championships at Shamrock, and I was there at the end, coming across the line. She was about twenty yards behind the girl from Howard Lake, Waverly, with maybe forty yards to go. And I think she ended up beating her by nineteen yards. I mean, it's like the girl just stood still and Ruby just flew by her. It was just such a cool thing to see. Again, another resigned coach, Jason Hester, has resigned as a cross-country coach. And so a big thanks to him for his dedication to the program. We'll be posting that, and I know we have a few people that are already interested in that position, so feel good about that. Boys football had a heck of a year. They won their first district championship since nineteen sixty-three. They had a good run, ran into a little bit of a buzzsaw at the end with Litchfield, which was probably salt in the wounds when Litchfield went to Providence and beat Providence, go to the finals against PC. Volleyball had a very nice year, finished, I think, third in the conference. They had a three seed in the section. Again, had a tough ending, but had a great year to begin with. Musical starts this week. Annie, we're back, Full District Musical nineteen, twenty, twenty-first. And the Winter Sports Meeting was fairly well-attended. I think people were still looking and waiting at home, looking for that virtual meeting. But we did have a pretty good crowd, and I think it went pretty well. It was kind of early this year, just the way everything fell. We had to do it kind of early, and we'll probably go back to a little bit later. It's just kind of the way everything kind of worked out. As winter, as we transition to winter activities, you know, everything starts starting Monday in November. Middle school basketball started a long time ago and dance, ten, twenty-five. Gymnastics and winter cheer, they start on eleven, eight. I'm sorry. Yeah, eleven, eight. Girls' basketball started today. Boys' basketball and wrestling starts next Monday. We've had a few games for girls' basketball in middle school, which we didn't have last year. It's just fun to have that again. What we're finding for middle, for basketball in general for girls throughout our conference, numbers are way down. New Linda Spicer has only one middle school team. New Linda Spicer, that's like a basketball powerhouse in the area. So the numbers are down and nobody can really figure out what's going on with that. So our numbers are okay. They're not great. We have two seventh grade teams and one eighth grade team. But the numbers of the eighth grade team are big enough that we can play two games in the A to B, and they just, the coaches just juggle that. We're looking for a great winter season. We did have a little, a couple of issues in the volleyball season where we had to sit down and talk to the kids about appropriateness in the stands. And we're going to reiterate that with them again and make sure that they are cheering for our kids and not against the other team, and especially not calling out names or numbers or talking to the players in a, you know, in a way that wouldn't be respectful. Kids get together and they just, they start acting a little bit. Well, they watch the college kids. They watch the, you know, they watch, you know, Duke and those people are nuts, you know? We just can't do that. So the kids are pretty receptive to that and we'll continue to work with them. We'll have extra bodies there to make sure that if things start going a little south, we're just going to ask them to leave. And not that they have to be out forever, but they'll be out for that game, and then we'll get back to them, talk to them about appropriateness. And so just want to make you aware of that because, you know, as we reshift, we come into the basketball season, they want their student section. I told them, I said, if the student section's a problem, we won't have it. We'll just eliminate that whole set of bleachers and they'll just be in the stands, and then we'll just ask them to go if they can't be here. So I don't think it's going to be a problem, but just want to make you aware of that. We have had that conversation with them and making sure that they're appropriate fans because they, around the conference, they're known, they're known as a great fan section, and we just don't want to get that reputation of being that bad fan section. So that's one thing that we'll continue to work on, so. That's about it. Two resignations. Again, the two coaches want to thank them publicly for their time, and we'll be posting those things fairly soon, see if we can get those filled. But that's about it. We've, we're ready for winter, I guess. Any questions?
Thanks, Mr. Pratt. Any questions for Mr. Pratt this evening? No questions. Just so nice to have like a, you know, regular season, you know, with fall, and now it's winter. That's exciting.
It is, it is. And it's, it's, it's a lot of fun to see the crowds coming back and the community members. And, you know, one of our biggest challenges right now is last year we were all online ticketing, which was so nice. We're finding it very difficult just to do that because you get, you get the older folks that come in and they just look at you like, you got an app on your phone, and they take out the flip phone and like, no, I'm on that phone. So we, we are, we do, do both. When we get to the section play, we found that we're better off selling tickets at the door because if you buy it online, we have to pass that cost on to the purchaser. And so you're paying more than you do at the door. We just, we're just going to sell them at the door. So it's one of those things that I think during the regular year, we, we kind of cover that cost. We don't pass it on to the person so we can do both online and at the door. It's no difference in price. But it has been a lot of fun to see the crowds back. And just so the board knows, our revenue's down a little bit for football games. That's because we play teams that are two and a half hours away, and they just don't travel. I mean, one of the games I looked over looked like a soccer game as far as a crowd goes. So our people come out, but we're just not getting that, that fan base from, you know, typical Maple Lake or even Howard Lake was kind of a bad night that night. So that's, that's going to be one more year we're still in the cycle, and then who knows? I think probably after next year, we might get placed back over here with the DCs and GSL and those teams. So we'll see.
I have a question for you, Mr. Pratt. Does the Minnesota State High School League, are they offering or advising on any space restrictions or anything like that as we had, other than capacity of the gymnasium?
No, they have it right now. It's under local control. They, they're, there is some talk right now about what they're going to do indoor with basketball as far as like scoring table and things. They're talking about maybe masking up the scoring table, maybe masking up the kids on the bench, but nothing's been set yet, but there are, continue to be conversations. I would expect a decision on that stuff would come probably in the next week or so.
Thanks.
Thank you. Good question. Any other questions on the activities updates? All right. Sounds good. Thank you. Moving on then, stay there, Mr. Pratt, to item number sixty, which is the overnight trip approved for the Rockford Boys Basketball Programs on December the July ninth and thirtieth to St. Cloud, Minnesota.
Yeah, the Boyla, Coach Tapper has requested a overnight stay. They typically have done this for the last few years, now obviously not last year. They go, they stay in St. Cloud, they play. They have a two-day tournament, twenty-ninth and thirtieth, they stay overnight. And it's just a good time for them to get together, it's team bonding. It really doesn't cost the district anything. It's all fundraised dollars. They, they do get a room for the bus driver and all that. They do everything they need to do. They make sure before, before eighteen takes a trip, they have, they have to have all the information, all the all emergency information, just so we can get ahold of people, you know, with rooms, who's in what room and all that kind of stuff. So we have, all that has to be in my office before they go. And so I know exactly where they are and how they are. They have my contact information. And so any, any coaches taking overnight, I know next week we're talking about gymnastics, same thing. All that has to be done prior to, to them taking off of that.
Questions for Mr. Pratt?
Yeah, just, just so you know, they don't have to do this stuff. I mean, overnights are, they can come back and go back and forth. It's something I think the kids look forward to and that team bonding, and I think it's kind of, it's, some coaches will do it, some won't, based on how hard it is to monitor the kids at night. I mean, when I was a collegiate hockey coach, I spent many nights in the hall on a chair, you know, making sure the kids stay in their room. And then you do the bed checks and a kid would be gone, jump in bed. And they come back and go, Coach, you're in my bed. I said, yep, you're not playing tomorrow. You know, you don't get a lot of sleep doing that. But coaches do it and they want to do it. I think that's okay. I think it's a, it's a fun, fun thing for the, for the kids to do. But it has to be organized. It has to be an appropriate number of chaperones too with those kids. So we'll make sure that happens.
So I'm going to just recuse myself from any votes on this, as I've got two kids in the program, but I will facilitate the vote and the conversation. Ms. Johnson?
Just coming from a coaching background and being involved in this and doing that in the past, I just want to share that if it's done right and it's organized well enough, it's an awesome experience for the kids. Helps them grow.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson?
I echo that sentiment, however, I will also recuse myself as I'm a student in the program.
So Eric Gordy made a motion to approve the overnight travel as submitted by Dan Pratt for the boys' basketball team on December 29th.
I have a question for Mr. Gordy. Do you have a second? I'll say, I have a second for Ms. Johnson. All in favor? Or any, sorry, any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Hi.
I know opposed. And then for the record, just note that Amy Edwards and Brady Anderson have recused from the vote. But it has passed. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to the gymnastics. So item number 6F, which is an overnight trip approval for the gymnastics team to St. Louis Park on January 21st, 2022.
And you look at St. Louis Park, you don't need to say where I have St. Louis Park. And you're right, you know, but again, it's, it's that activity with the kids. They're going to be staying in a hotel if it's approved in the West End area. The kids will be able to walk over to Punch Bowl Social where they can bowl, have some food. A great team bonding experience. So I, it's like the other one before, do they need to do it? No, they don't, you know, they could easily just drive down Saturday morning on a bus. But again, no, very little cost to the district. There'll be a busing cost, but that's what they would have anyway. But true disclosure, there'd be two buses. The bus will take them now and drop them off and then come back. Would not stay overnight, the bus driver of the bus, and then the bus will have to go back, pick them up, take them to the meat steak and bring them back to Rockford. So there's a little extra cost for that, but not, not significant. And I think if that's a deciding factor, I'm pretty sure that they would cover that cost.
Hi, Ms. Johnson?
So just clarifying question. On the application, it checks the district as a source of funding? Yeah, just to clarify, they will be paying for everything but the busing?
Correct. Yeah. And when, I think the, the box will check district because the funds are in the 21 account, which is under board control in the district, but it's a fundraising account. So it's not full one money, it's not district money that way, but it is in the district. Any comment?
Any other questions? Ms. Prescott? No? All right. Then I would, this is an action item, so I would entertain a motion if anyone is interested in placing one.
I'd like to make the motion to approve the gymnastics trip to St. Louis Park on January 21st.
All right, I have a first from Ms. Prescott. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second from Mr. Anderson. I have a first and a second. Any further discussion? I didn't know further discussion. I'll, I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Hi.
Anyone opposed? Carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Pratt.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. Thanks for your attendance tonight. All right. Next, we'll move on to item number 6G, which is our Director of Teaching and Learning Report. I'll call upon our Director of Teaching and Learning, Mr. Kevin Keller. Welcome.
Thank you. All right, here we go. Per board request, I've got a lot of data points up here tonight. Yeah. And I don't know if we go through piece by piece by piece, but there are a couple of slides that I will point out that kind of indicates pretty interesting pieces. Really what I want to focus on is what we're doing with those S2I reports, those screening intervention reports. There's a lot of talk around, there's a lot of talk around data and reporting that school districts and businesses are very data-rich, but information poor. It's called drip. And, and, you know, how do we use that data for actionable items? And I think Eric has asked me many times, you know, what does this look like? And I've got some good examples for you tonight here. I've got a little handout, I'll give it to you in just a minute, to show you what, what one of these S2I reports would look like in the hands of our teachers and how that kind of works out. The other thing I just want to talk about a little bit too is just the alignment of MTSS and what we've been doing with the buildings. And it kind of piggybacks from what both Dr. Anderson Hume and what Mr. Mar were talking about earlier with their teams. It's not my goal to put any more on the backs of our teachers this year. It's my goal to kind of work directly with our principals and on their goals and to kind of lift and raise them up from the perspective of a district-level partnership. And what I've seen more so this year than what I've been able to do in the past is with the expansion of teaching learning with our MTSS position, I feel like both our technology integration and our MTSS specialists have acted a lot more like coaches than, than what we've been able to do in the past. And I really like that model. We have that, we do have a coaching model through the QCOM program. That's a little bit different. That's a little peer-to-peer coaching model that's effective. And I like the way that that works. But this is a, this is a different approach to coaching. And that kind of lifts teachers up kind of where they're at. And I, hopefully I can kind of explain it to you a little bit before I do this. So these are some of the pieces that we're going to talk about. The literacy instructional planning sample, I'll spend a little bit more when we get to that. Screening intervention report. This is a piece that we're going to lean on relatively when using our fast data moving forward. This is a piece that we started almost two years ago. We started to look into this particular intervention report. We've had to change how we do fast testing. And as we moved into fast testing with the middle school away from the math testing, we're starting to be able to get into those, particularly into the English and the math classrooms to kind of present this S2I data, the screening intervention data for very specific use of our data and very specific interventions with small groups and individual students. We'll look at some of that historical, Fastbridge, follow-up historical Fastbridge data, including that Fall STAR data that came in that Mr. Mar spoke about. Talk about some intervention resources and strategies and enrichment opportunities. I don't want to go too deep into that, but I am going to point out that we may want to talk about our gifted and talented program that you, I don't know that you know about it at the level that you should. So I'll talk to Rod about maybe bringing that forward at a future board meeting. It might be something that you, it's really an interesting program that I think we should bring, we need to lift it up a little bit. We'll talk more about that. And then the data use for PLC and billables and working with principals as we move through. So here's kind of a sample that we're trying to kind of build out as we go through our MTSS process. And we're looking at what we currently have, and we, wow, it's a long ways away from, I'm sorry. It's, it's, I'm nearsighted, I'm not far. If I move up just a little. I'll.
On the podium.
Oh, that actually, all right. And so, oh, that's way better. All right. So as, as we've worked with Ben, Mr. Ben Vonnell is our MTSS specialist. Kevin works with us all the time. What we, what we kind of look for are these Tier One, Tier Two, Tier Three pieces. We looked at that triangle last time when we talked about that MTSS process. And as we kind of go through with all of our, our three, our three buildings, we're looking for those Tier One, Tier Two, Tier Three interventions. That Tier One, again, remember that's our core curriculum, what every student would go through. And that's the majority of what we're looking at. So if we're looking at the reading, literacy, instructional planning process, how we kind of work through it, in theory, if we're talking Tier One, our K4 curriculum standards, if everything goes well with our students, yep, they all run through a Fastbridge report. We pull an S2I report on them. We work with anything that we need, with our PLCs, our teaching learning, we come in and maybe coach up our, our teachers to some extent. We look at a formative and several assessments that we do with a variety of different tools, our press assessments, our use of RASD kids, our journeys, our, all of our different materials that we use with our students. And our learning targets are met by students. And sure enough, that's great. That, that's Tier One. That's perfect. We wish everybody could do that. That's not the case though. Frequently, we have to go to what's called a Tier Two intervention for some of our students. This is where our Title Access Reading Core EL resources, our, and EL teams come into play with our Tier Two interventions for some of our students. We're trying to get them back over into that Tier One so that they can get down to our learning, our meeting, our targeted, our targets are being met by our students through that. So some of those resources that we put into place there are our press interventions, LFI, CIPS, and rewards. Those are all used by our access team along with our Fastbridge assessments and our journeys assessments. As we kind of go through the process, there is a lot of work that we do and a lot of coaching that happens again through our PLCs, through our QCOM process, and through our MTSS specialists and technology integrations as we move through this year. For our few kids though, there is that Tier Three intervention. You can see that our arrows got to go back and forth. We want to make sure that there's an opportunity to intervene with the kid, but also bring them back into a tier below if possible. And so that's the purpose of going through those interventions. But our IT team intervention comes in at that point to see whether or not it's appropriate for that student to get into even deeper intervention territories with special education services. And through the help with that special education services, you know, we hope that our students would meet those targets. And so what we're trying to do is create these types of instructional planning processes for both the reading, math, our math literacy and math, and the high school literacy and math. And that's one of the things that we're kind of working on as we go through. Just thinking, yes, I think I can see that.
The next one's pretty little too.
I'm feeling a little old. All right. So the S2I screening report. So this is, this is kind of what you see once we have put in what's called the Fast Track interventions, or the screeners this year. We put in what's called Fast Track screeners. Actually, at the end of last year, if you recall from last year, I said we were going to do a little pilot program last summer and see if we could pull some of the screening information, these S2I reports down and use them for targeted services work last summer. We were able to pull them down and we had some success with it. And again, you know, we were kind of building that plane as we were flying. And, but we were able to pull some of these interventions out and actually implement them with some of our elementary and middle school students last summer. And so that gave us a little bit of footing moving into this year to kind of push it out on a little grander scale with all of our K8 teachers as we move forward. So what you see here are a couple of different, this is actually what you'd see at the top of that screening report. This is what you see on the bottom of the screening report. What you don't see here is obviously student names. This is an actual report that comes from one of our teachers. I believe the top part, I think they're both pulled, one was pulled from like a fifth grade class and one was pulled from like a second grade class. But it kind of shows you three levels of intervention. There's a lot of explanation there. If you're really interested in that, we can, we talked more about that at some point. But that's really what I lean on my coaches for, to dive, deep dive into what these pieces mean for our teachers. And they've sat down now with our K4 teams and walked through what these fast S2I reports can do for those teachers. And we're going back now and individually working with teachers who have specific questions on how to implement the data. So it's not just a matter of, okay, here's my class and here's where they're meeting or are exceeding. We're actually seeing now what can we do to intervene with the kids. And at this point, I'm going to pass to you. I don't want to disclose in the record. It's just kind of a visual, it doesn't do well on a report. But this is an example of an S2I report. One is a reading and one is a math S2I report. And it really breaks down for that teacher some very specific pieces that they need, including the amount of time they need to spend on that particular intervention. We're going to put out some guidelines as we go through the MTSS process type for teachers. I know we've been asked for, you know, what are these interventions as we pull up? And what it does is fast creates an algorithm based on the tests that we've given. And from that, it'll create a report like this. So this is the bottom part of the S2I report that I pushed up here. And you can see that it actually creates, there, up top there, I think it says 1.2 fondness and fluency under the plan. And that's actually linked to what I gave you right there. That's the plan for a very specific intervention based on the data. And that's, that's a huge change for our teachers this year as we kind of moved into this process. And it does take additional coaching and we have a lot of questions and that's okay. So we're going to work our way through that through this year so that we get a better use of our data. And it's, it's really a nice way to go on it. One of the other things that we can do is eventually take and put some of our own homegrown interventions into it. So we will be able to push in both press and our Gillingham interventions underneath that plan side. And we can actually link to that as we go through. What we've got through right now with our reading specials, so we used some of our access teachers to go through the initial literacy plans and pull out the ones that weren't appropriate to rap. And so we eliminated a lot of those that just, we didn't have materials for. And we left in the ones that were appropriate for our teachers. And we're going to continue to build that list of interventions for our teachers. I think it's a nice way to use our data as we move forward. It is, it's a big task. We spend a lot of time on it. We just continue to pluck away at that. And once that's built, then it's just, it's a matter of maintaining as you move through. And we'll continue on up that with the math interventions and so on and so forth. It's a little bit more different with the STAR data. Doesn't quite work the same, unfortunately. But we're, you know, the STAR data is working well too. We'll, we'll get to that in just a minute.
Quick question. Is this side the same as that side?
No. That one, what do you have the literacy report? That, the literacy report? Changed, yeah. They look similar and so that teachers have the same look, they're set up the same. Obviously, the interventions are based on. And so a teacher, as you see up there, may get a set of three, four different interventions per class. And what it's doing is it's creating small groups for that teacher to pull out. So if you think about the standardized process at the elementary school, what it does is it allows a teacher to pull a small group of kids for a very specific intervention for a number of days. And if you look in there, and like I should talk about, you know, we may need to do this intervention for five days, 15 minutes a day to get this small group of kids up to speed with their peers. I think it's a powerful piece that's kind of really got to get some of our teachers moving forward. All right. Some of the other pieces, so for our K1 students here, here are some of the fast, early reading screening subtests kind of as we go through. And when they, oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. So when the board is done looking at these, I didn't see any student data. These are just examples, right? So I think we'll just put them on the back table should any member of the gallery wish to.
No, there's no student data.
Perfect. Yep. So it sounds good.
Then there's no teacher names on there.
Yeah, right. Perfect. Awesome. Thank you, Bree.
Okay. So again, I was asked to kind of talk about what some of the, so this will be kindergarten, first grade, what's called early reading screening tests that they, they put out. This is kind of. This is kind of when they put them out, they don't come all at the same time because as you think about it, students are, kindergartners and first graders are developing their reading skills at different places. And you can see what we, what we screen for with kindergarten, it's all the concepts, print, you know, can we read left or right? So you can kind of see where that goes from there. Onset sounds, learn, uh, learn names, learn sounds. It's exactly what you think it is. It's not real tricky stuff here for kids. And so this is what our kindergarten teachers get to do with our little one fall. And then you kind of also see what our first graders are kind of dealing with also. This is our fast, uh, early math screening materials also. And here's our data. One thing that you will typically see is early reading versus early math scores. So any math scores tend to be, those are higher. Just, I think they're here, yeah. Just because the, the concept of reading is a little bit more difficult to grasp than the early concepts of math. And then from what I understand, that this is a pretty common trend across the districts. And so these are our kindergarten and first grade early reading and early math scores. Uh, just a little quick analysis, and, and I put in the member, in the middle there, remember, these are different cohorts of students. But it just kind of goes to show you the different cohorts. They come in very different spots every year. And, and you can kind of see pandemic numbers, pandemic numbers, post pandemic numbers. I mean, it's, it's just very, it, it shows you the, the power of that cohort coming in. And just that there, you're going to see differences as kids come through our system. And that's what makes teaching unique, that you're never going to see the same thing twice. So, and you can see that, so these are all different cohorts that have come through over the last four years, including this. So this is CBMR, uh, this is our curriculum-based reading. There is no testing in the fall for, I think that's a grade one CBMR screening because that's, that's going to kick in here as we go through. We still can create our S two I reports, though, even based on everything that we do with our kindergarten and our first grade classes also. So you can kind of take a peek at that kind of as we go through. And those interventions then are built as our teachers continue to progress monitor and assess our kids throughout the year. And again, a lot of data here, um, on our different cohorts going all the way through. The one thing that I would point out, it's actually slide 16, I was missing a data point that we put into this, that we put into this presentation, but that wasn't actually put in. I believe that I, honestly, I can't recall what grade level it was. But it did actually make a significant difference in the chart. Ivan, do you happen to remember what grade level that slide six, I don't know, slide 16? I can't see the slide number. So I'll see if I can. Yeah, okay. And, and if you notice there, um, you'll see that some, let me see if there's a better example. It's kind of hard to tell on grade two and grade three. But you can kind of see where there are some COVID-related dips in our data. And you can kind of see exactly what happens. We have fall, okay, so you can see that grade one winter. We don't have spring data for grade one. So anywhere you see a winter data, that would be a COVID year. That would be where we didn't, weren't able to give the kids the fast tests in the spring. And you do see some significant drops. But then, in some of these slides too, you're starting to see some significant recovery a little bit later on as we move through. Same thing here, you can see a bit of a dip there in grade two winter. And you see it kind of consistently as we go through some of these. But that's, okay, this one's 16, so, yeah, I didn't have that fall five on the grade five A math. And you can see kind of a recovery there as we looked at it before, I'm like, oh, that's down there. Okay, so you can kind of see that, that there has been a bit of a recovery now that they're back in person, or even from spring to fall. Note that, that that grade five cohort, um, coming back in school and having access to summer school may very well have had a huge benefit on what we had. I mean, I can't conclusively say that's what it is, but I will give my summer school teachers some credit here, seriously. I mean, it was a, that was a large summer school class that went through and there's a lot of kids that continue to learn over the summer. Again, with some of that S two I report, we had the opportunity to intervene where it was necessary. And I think you might see some of that, there's some other places where that's not, or is clear. But, you know, it is nice to see some other trends. Again, here too, you can see some of those. Now, this is where it gets a little sticky when we get into the middle areas because you're really taking three different data points and try to stay it up there. One, I, I can't say that it's statistically valid, but it makes for a nice graph. So, um, well, you know, if, if you look here, we've got some MCA data mixed with some FAS data, mixed with some STAR data. And so, you know, you, you see something consistent, like, here we go. MCA results for grade three through five, fast beginning in seventh grade, you know. Again, we're looking for trends, so, you know, and so in terms of proficiencies, you kind of through. It's, it's going to work for, for our purposes for now. And we'll talk to individual teachers to help them understand what their individual reports are. We're not looking at grade level data necessarily with an individual teacher. We're looking for what's happening in their class and with that individual student. Because what we're really looking for is one year's plus worth of growth in a kid. So regardless of where they started from, we want to make sure that they make that year's worth of growth as we move through. Our ninth graders, again, we're getting a mix of different data points here. So, you know, I, I kind of wonder a little bit about particularly that, that writes on math history, but it is what we've got here. So a couple of other things that are kind of interesting here, yeah, before we go here, with our 10th grade reader, you'll notice that we've got a blue line indicating some issues with our reading. One of the things that we didn't do, we did go through, and there's a way to analyze STAR data in a way that'll kind of show whether a kid kind of just moved through it quickly and clicked C and, or whether or not they took it seriously. You can tell by the number, by the amount of time it takes us, and there are millions of data points, and they know how long they, being STAR, knows how long it takes a kid to take this test. And they can indicate to us whether or not that test was taken seriously. For math, we actually did retest some students this, this fall. We didn't retest students with the STAR. However, we did pull them in and test them with our access high school teacher and to determine whether or not they needed further intervention. And we're hoping once that work gets on, we do take it seriously. And, and we, we hope that they do too in the winter. We'll see, that'll be an interesting data point this year. That's all I can say. So keep your eye on that one as we move forward here. All right, so supporting, you can see a lot of ways that we're trying to use this data to support our teachers across the board. That includes that S two I report and, and working really closely with our PLCs now on using the data and to set goals. Obviously, our building goals are set with that. We have building goals that are set at the state level of QCOM. And we've heard of a couple of our building goals here from our principals today. Again, we're working directly with the teachers. We've met with our tech integrations at war, the MTSS specialists, depending on what is that we're doing? Is it more of a technical solution or is it more of a coaching situation? Do they need to know how to use a tool? Or do they need to know how to use the data? There is a difference between those two as we kind of move forward. And we're really trying to do a lot of cross-training within that department to make sure that we can kind of answer those questions on, on a lot of different problems. It's been a lot of growth with our teachers and within the services that we can provide. Recommended resources regarding training for math reading, both in print and in digital resources. You know, we, it is really easy to kind of see, it's not easy, but we, we can definitely use that data to kind of help guide where we need to go for a lot of our instructional practices and a lot of our professional development moving forward. It, it's, it's easy to see where the need is. It's not easy to find the correct training for it all. That, it is, that's always a difficult thing. So IT team, again, we've, uh, teaching and learning is participating in all IT meetings and watching that process. We do have some recommendations that are coming forward to streamline the IT process. We've, that have come forward after principals in the near future. And we're working directly with the three counselors. All three of those counselors are part of our MTSS process team. And the team consists of Ivan, the MTSS specialist, the three counselors, and me. And we're working very closely with the outside organization called CARRY out of the University of Minnesota. We're also working with MDE and a new program called Compass that got pushed out. We meet as a team, and I would argue that the CARRY MTSS plan, the, it's called the Process Guide, the MTSS Process Guide, that work that we're doing is probably, well, I had given maybe the top five trainings I've had in 30 years, seriously. When we go through one process, it's really good. We had great feedback from our three counselors. I'm not a huge fan of online PD, but it's, it's the best online PD I've had since I've been on online PD. So it's really powerful and it's really rock for directing. That's what I really liked about it. It was time to meet and talk as a team and come back as a group and process. It's, it's been a powerful training, but I think we have our next one on Wednesday. We're going back to that. So we'll be in that all year. And when we come out of that, we'll have a pre-conference of the MTSS Process Guide with recommendations for buildings and videos, teachers, and, and kind of what that system was like moving forward. And again, you can kind of see some of the other stuff, STAR data is to, to create the building SIP and QCOM. There's more.
Thank you, Mr. Keller. Questions from the board, Mr. Gordy?
No. Took a long time to put that together, appreciate it. I see the bills, right? And I didn't say you have to ask testing, and I had no idea what it was or what it did. So that was so much more helpful than just seeing, we fast tested and we did PD. So that helps me, right? Because all I see is the bill, right?
I do too, though.
Right, but, but that's, but I have no concept of the resources and the objects that are available to our staff members if they choose to make use of them. And FAS had expanded to the middle school as well. And then we're mapping, or sorry, we're using Renaissance, right?
Renaissance and nine and 10.
And just nine or 10, okay.
Well, some, a little bit on 11 if you, that's, that's more of an, if we get a, if, if we need that type of testing.
Yeah, because, I mean, just, you know, that personal, social, and just school skill for those kids that lost two years of school, right? I mean, just that social aspect, they don't know how to be middle schoolers, they don't know how to be high schoolers, because they haven't learned from the upper grades yet. So just those gaps, so I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Mr. Gordy.
Ms. Preska, thank you so much for this. And that's why Eric asked me a couple of questions because I have a little bit more experience with the testing phase. And the reason that early literacy is important is because maybe you've all heard about this right now, but there's a big push for signs of reading. And what that early literacy assessment does is let us know if a student has indicators or signs of potential, potentially big characteristics of dyslexia. And what you're reporting, and then it shows us as a board that we can see that the district is listening to the research with the signs of reading and how instruction could be. And using the data, the way that you've outlined it, lets me as a board member know that you are the teacher in a being explicit and systematic with their instructions to meet the students' needs. And so I really appreciate this because at our level now as a board, we know that everything that we're hearing out there is going on, we're addressing all that. And so thank you very much because I know this was a big lift, a lot of time, and I truly appreciate it to let us know what we have in place is working. And it's wonderful, thank you.
Ms. Preska, any other questions or comments?
Can I ask one quick? So this is awesome. And it was really helpful for me too as a non educator in the room, but just as a regular board member. And I have a question for you around, so, okay. So we kept our elementary school largely in person last year. And so I was looking, you know, I was just writing notes with like some of the data with pandemic, no pandemic, all of that. Probably the biggest impact of the pandemic cross-checking, and let's tell me if I'm wrong, is that spring when we kind of shut everything down and everybody went home and we lost that, like, it was like the spring of 2019, right? Where it was like all in-person, like online learning, but we didn't often do it. And it was just like, oh, sorry, 2020, thank you. Yeah, and then into that summer and then into that fall. And when we looked at, when you presented those kindergarten and first grade numbers, like it seems like there's like a 20% dip in the, in that particular fall. And then it came back when we were back in. And I'm just wondering, Mr. Keller, are you, are you able to see, when you look at our data, and maybe this compared to other districts that weren't as fortunate to be able to provide an in-person learning experience for our youngest learners during the pandemic? Are you, when you compare our data to others, do you see less of a dip or are we not? I'm just curious.
No, we, we show less of a dip in particularly in reading. However, what the teachers were able to do with small grouping didn't happen. If you recall, there were still a lot of restrictions. However, the in-person, there's no doubt that there, there was a huge difference. And, and you will, um, uh, we still had a significant number of kids that were relatively young, if you recall. And so, uh, you know, and, and that being said, I can also tell you that how we did elementary online learning was different than what a lot of other districts did. And, and some of the companies that we had originally contacted, by the way, are now on trade lawsuits for being sued for not providing services that they promised to serve. And so fortunately, we got out of that by choosing, so we chose and, yeah, just sheer luck, yeah. So I think, um, but the, the reality is, is that the, the number of kids that we had in person, certainly a huge difference in, in what we see. And then I also think that we went back. Yeah, there was still a lot of kids that, that didn't want to sort of go back like, like one. But I think that lift, as heavy as it was, was not as heavy as it was in some districts that were called for that target. I, I can talk about that from a personal perspective, that's another story, so, yeah.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, gratitude, this is a big lift, but thank you. My only question is from a board level perspective, is there anything you need from us, from the board, related to the data that you presented this evening or support?
No, I don't think so. I, the, the, where we're at from a department standpoint, we're, we're rightsized at this point. This is a powerful team that can actually do, from my perspective, what, what teaching and learning needs to do. It was really hard before. You, you do need to have certain people that have certain skills. And we need to cross-train, we need to kind of continue to kind of work as a team. My team is outstanding, period. I mean, they really are, they, they have done a great job of really going through. And just, just know that what you're seeing right now didn't start this year. This started a number of years ago as we kind of move forward and kind of saw what we needed. And then continue to kind of move forward with that process, so. And, and to Eric's point, it's hard to explain. So I appreciate that you're, it makes a lot of sense.
Great, well, thank you. All right, uh, next we'll go item number, agenda item number seven is just a placeholder for safe and welcoming environment, but we don't actually have any agenda items under that category. So then we'll move on to item number eight, which is efficient and effective operations. Item number eight A is policies 902R, second reading and 806, first reading. As was presented in your packet, um, this is a briefing tonight, is correct? Okay, so below are the changes made to each policy. This is a first reading for policy 806 and a second reading for policy 902R. We will take action at the next board meeting unless changes are suggested by the board at or prior to, or at the next meeting, I guess it would be. So any comments from the district or questions from the board to kind of date?
No, there's nothing, no, no additional information to add other than what you just stated, but this is a first read and we'll come back next month. So if there's significant changes, then just let us know so we can incorporate that into the board packet for your review prior to the board meeting.
Sounds great, thank you. Any comments? No, all right, then we will move on to our next agenda item, which is item number nine to eight. So with that, um,
So with that, I know we do have staff and others in the audience, so you are welcome to stay and you are also welcome to go because you will not be called on for anything after this point in the agenda. Thank you for attending tonight, everyone. All right. So next into item number nine, which is our board and superintendent updates and announcements. Nine A just declares that our work session, the next work session is scheduled on Monday, December sixth, 2021 in the RCC. We have the intention at this point in time to have ICS back for more of a diatribe on facilities planning and I'm not sure the other things that will be in the work session, but board, you can count on ICS facilities discussion, at least at this point in time. Next, also the regular meeting of the Board of Education on Monday, December twentieth, 2021 in the RCC. This will also be our truth and taxation hearing. And then is that also superintendent dean where the audit will be presented as well?
At the regular board meeting in December, yes.
December. So the truth and taxation is required, that's a separate, you know, kind of a meeting and then the the regular meeting will talk about the audits. Okay, very good. Other questions or comments, looking at the clerk here for cross-check on the dates, do they look so in jest and appropriate? All right, very good. So next, then we'll move along to item number nine B, which is our board and committee updates. Perhaps let's start with just Ms. Johnson. Since the last time I made you, go everybody else first.
Did my work with everything set here, so. All right. After our last board meeting, we have had four district side negotiation meetings and one with EMR. Theater board work session, I had a Masiko meeting, and that one actually was pretty cool. You guys, we met at one of the facilities, it's a level four, level five facility, actually I think it's level five facility in Litchfield called Wings, and it's for students that are kinetically dependent. And they live in there, and so we met there, they have one classroom, one teacher, and she has an assistant and this teacher. I wish you all could meet her. She is absolutely incredible. She'd been on Masiko board at one time and they toured a facility and she goes, that's a job I'd want right there. And she worked to have Wings created, and she's been the teacher there for fourteen years, something like that. She's amazing and what she offers to these kids is incredible. And she offered some pretty personal stories. It's awesome that we have something like that available to us if we have students that have needs like that. It's pretty incredible. Actually afterwards got a chance to visit with her quite a bit, just get a little more in-depth understanding of the facility and the kids and the things that she kind of works for. It's, it's something that we have available. I got the shorts dress, not really, but I was asked to meet with the auditors for the district. And so I did that on the twenty eighth of October for Masiko and also on the coordinators negotiations teams. So started those negotiations, woo-hoo, lucky. That was really good. So again, have heard just wonderful things about our hire over there, the executive director over there, but they're all real happy with who was hired, Melissa Hanson, she's started a super awesome job over there. Attended the Rockford Greenfield Chamber meeting last Thursday, was there a bit Brenda? And then that night, the marching band performance, we have such an awesome program here. So cool, so good, so, so cool. Was on the interview committee for the first round for the post position on Friday. And then work session prior to our meeting today, so there you go.
Yes. Any questions for Jessica? All right, next, Mr. Anderson.
Yeah, so I'll be attending the Masiko meeting on the twenty-third in Jessica's place. Otherwise, not a whole lot to additional to report. I will, unrelated to the board itself, looking forward to the Education Foundation fundraiser on Friday. So love that event, so, yeah, that's my update.
Did your husband pick that?
No, my wife, I believe, has it picked out. I don't know what it is.
That's a good man.
I hope it's, just keep it simple, is my, yeah, keep it simple is my general rule.
Ms. Nealon?
So I wasn't able to make it to the continuing ed meeting. They always hold them at like seven in the morning, not a morning person. But I was asked to reset the minutes and things like that, so I will be taking a look at those. The community ed meeting was postponed, will be rescheduled at a later date. And to my knowledge, none of my other committees met since the last time I've seen you. And that's about all I have, other than cheering on our kiddos and all of our teams and like crazy. That's all I have to say. Well, we heard that part, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Can you add that I wasn't continuing ed meeting last Thursday? My bad. How would I add this though, my God?
Mr. Gordy?
Light month, facilities committee meeting last week or Monday or whatever day. Today's Monday, last week. Long days and, and Mr. Anderson, looking forward to seeing you on Friday. Reprising my role as, as emcee and dessert, dessert peddler. And yes, I had my costume. Mr. Pendings and I are sure to be a hit.
You always are, Gordy.
Awesome, all right, Ms. Preska? Was this in my folder because I wasn't here last month or is it everybody's? So I don't have to talk about that, you already talked about it when I wasn't here. When I was off in Utah, getting COVID. Let's see, so the negotiations with the teachers' union and a few district level meetings and then negotiation with the teachers' union. And prep for the board meetings. And then one thing, and the night, the last prep was nice because I was driving, so that was a good use of my time. And then I did join the AMSD virtual meeting. And I reached out to Amy first because I was interested in the PELSBY information there, but they're going to talk about, they didn't talk about it as much as I wanted to. They talked more about that their board meeting, so if anyone's looking for something else to do with their life, they do prefer to have PELSBY, it's the teacher licensing board, and they like it when a member is, has familiarity of being a school board. So if anyone's looking for something to do, there's an opening. And I don't know, were you able to do, if, okay, so they did go over a lot of information that I wrote down because I think it's nothing that we need to discuss, but we just want to have it on our radar because they're talking about it at AMSD and across the state. Gender identity, non-conforming is about 3% of students thinking about restrooms, locker rooms, gender identity programs. The district has a legal application, I wrote this down, to protect this class of students. And a quote that I wrote, as far as with all of our policies, but this one in particular, policies words without action if not tied to a budget, which I think is funny because I talked about budget today. And just, I'm not, I don't want, I don't think we need to discuss it at this point, it's just something to keep in your, our radar. And we would certainly trust that superintendent dean is doing what needs to be done for these students. And then we spent some time discussing the prior league situation and policy and just wanted to lift it up that we want to make sure that we have the necessary policies in place in our district in case that were. That was it, it was a good meeting to join. And I have another meeting this week to follow up with the legislative platform, so more to come.
Thanks. All right, that's everybody but me. So then just a little stuff going on here, so have an engagement teacher negotiations. Thank you for that time in the work session today to just talk about some of the items. And the negotiations generally are going very well. It's always a positive, productive experience. Similarly to Beth, connecting in with superintendent dean regarding work session and board meeting, perhaps amongst a few other items. And then partnering with Mr. Gordy on the facilities committee. So I think that facilities work is going to be big work to consider in the coming year. And how might we need and want to approach growing space constraints and or, you know, overall maintenance things. So I look forward to the discussion at the work session with everyone, talking about different scenario building and different prioritization and those sort of things, so. Eric, is there anything else you could add related to facilities?
It's just really important to remember that everything you saw in there isn't an EDIC mandate or anything, they're just possibilities. Placement of things are suggestions by ICS based on what you saw. I mean, the biggest items tend to concern ourselves, I think, is the $5 million in deferred maintenance. The rest of them are programmatic things and building changes based on what, what might happen, but that's my biggest concern. But, and again, none of that is, is a thing we're going to do or have to do. It's just suggestions from staff, community and administration, interview about what's your district.
Perfect statement, thank you. All right, with that, that's my few things, moving on to superintendent dean.
Thank you, Chair Edwards. I'd just like to really start by acknowledging, especially the past couple months, or really the first three months of the school year, the tremendous lift that my team has undertaken this year. You heard today some robust report outs from the principals, from Dan, if you remember last month, month, our director of technology and Jim and Tanley and Aaron. It's just been a tremendous amount of effort this fall. There has been a kind of a consistent theme that I'm hearing that feels like this year has been more challenging than last year in terms of what we have to do and how we have to go about doing it. We have, I know it was a blessing to have some federal funds coming into our district, but each one of those grants have intense tentacles that reach across many department areas. And I just want, I just hope the board sees that, that there's just been a huge amount of lift. And I know our teachers are thin, but so is our administrative team. Because of course we reflect our teaching staff also, we feel them. One of the things that I've tried to strive to do since being in this position is making sure the folks at the district office are seeing what our purpose, and our purpose is to support the schools, of course. And so I try to encourage them to get out and go to the Veterans Day program or sit in that, and go to the concert or go to the presentation that one of the principals did, did in every single classroom. But again, it's so, we understand what our purpose is at the district office. We were not working in isolation, we're, our whole purpose is to support our buildings and to support the staff in those buildings. So again, I hope you see it. You know, we started this evening with the costing model, and although it was only a one-page document on the screen and in our hands, that was a tremendous amount of effort, again, both from our business manager and HR specifically. But again, we're also trying to be physically responsible. And yes, we could have purchased up another, using a vendor, if you will, but it wasn't cost-effective for us, plus if we wouldn't have been able to turn it around and provide the board with the information that we were able to provide tonight. But it might have been, it would have been an easier route, no doubt. Because they would have come in and harvested the data that, again, we leaned on HR and our business managers specifically to gather in the midst of coming off of an audit. Right now, we're going into benefits, what is Eric calling, excuse, thank you, open enrollment. So again, I'm just hoping that the board sees the heavy lift and our efforts to try to connect the dots. With the board reports today, I hope you saw, heard some themes. Again, so we're not all working in isolation or in our individual silos, but again, that we are trying to connect the dots to make our organization run more efficiently. But moving on, in terms of things that, in addition to working with my team, of course, participated in the facilities meeting that both Chair Edwards and Director Gordy have already mentioned. Continuing with negotiations, which I would say are going real well, probably up until this moment. But they're gonna go, they're gonna go well. But again, continuing to work in good faith with the teachers, and we are entering up that space, I just want to put it on record, that we are working just with each other, the two teams, without attorneys, without, you know, professional negotiators, or just leaning on ourselves to do the right thing for what's in the best interest of the organization. Safe house to school is still a thing. I don't know if you've noticed, but old Blinkie, that's what we've kind of named him. Blinkie is up at the intersection of 55 and, what is that, Maple across right in front of Casey's. It's actually called a, there's an official name for it, it's an RF, RRFB, rectangular rapid flashing beacon. But that is up and running, and now the next step with that will be working with mostly our middle school kids and providing some curriculum, which is part of the state school initiative. They have what they call a white walk bike fun curriculum that's associated with the grants. And so we'll be incorporating that into the middle school curriculum. The, keep staying with the safe house to school. The other project that has advanced is in front of the middle, in front of the high school and the elementary with repurposing the, what do you call it, the drive pass lanes into actual left turn and right turn lanes. And so that'll be the next piece of the project, which you'll see next spring if it stays on schedule. And again, I want to remind our viewing audience that that's a cooperation between the school district, the county, the city of Rockford and Minda. So there's a lot of pieces there to get something like Blinkie put in, took a lot of lift and a lot of meetings just for that one light on Highway 55. Other meetings, attended the AMSD meeting, that one virtual, attended a law conference, an all-day law conference last Friday, which spoke to some of the things that you were speaking of, Beth. And so we absolutely have that on our radar, and we have some examples of policies that other districts around us have adopted. But we have done some things internally to address the needs of some of our students in terms of gender protocols and things like that. We had a Northwest Suburban site visit last week that went very well. And again, that was working with our Northwest Suburban team as well as the individuals who have been assigned to Rockford to try to oversee our authorization process. Started calendar committee. So we have a district calendar committee. So we have a district calendar committee. We met one time and it was last week. We have three meetings on the schedule. And hopefully, we might, we might come to the board in December with two calendars. We're doing two years again. We just think that that's a more efficient use of our time versus reassembling that group every year. So we're hopeful to come in December with two calendars. If not, it'll be in January. We'll just see how efficient the committee is over the next two meetings because we've already had one. Attended the chamber luncheon last weekend. Or, I'm sorry, not weekend, last week. Which was, again, it's always nice to meet and greet some of our local chamber members and get to know a little bit more about their businesses and their connections to Rockford. We also had a PD day last Monday. It was a grading day as well as a district building PD day. Of course, the grading portion of the day was teachers having time to spend in their classroom to get ready for the next quarter and post those quarter grades. And then the second half of the day, which was actually the first half of the day, was building professional development time. And I think you've heard from the three principals over the past two months what their building focuses are. And then the district focus, the second half of the morning, was continuing with our conversation that we started during workshop week, which was around culturally responsive classrooms. And so we brought the folks back out from the Y. And Hattie Wells, Hattie Wells rather, continued on with that discussion. And so, yeah, just continued with that. We're finishing up some pieces with the audit. Tammy's still working on that. I too was interviewing Jessica, of course. Being in the district office and they looked around and they hooking me in interviews, like, oh, let's interview her. Couple of other things and then I'll wrap it up here. Attended the Veterans Day program at the A-Weems last week. I tell you, if you want your heart swelled three times a day through, that's the program we go to. It was just so rewarding to see. First of all, the kids were great. The kids were awesome. They were so respectful. And sitting on, you know, the cross leg in the gym was just so warm. But inviting some veterans of students who are at A-Weems, it's just a great program to see those students get up and talk about, you know, my grandpa was in the army. It's just so cute. And having the fourth grade sing, just again, having Delano color guard attended. And so just teaching the kids how they react or respond to when the color guard walks in, how they get up until the colors are actually set in place and how they stay standing when they take down the colors and they walk off. But just teaching those protocols at such an early age is just, it's just what we should be doing as, not just an educational institution, but as Americans. What else? And then ended that last week with the marching band concert, which again, was a great testament of our music program. And Jessica already spoke to it, that we just have such a great program. And to see those kids perform at the level that they did last week, knowing that the last two years, they practiced virtually. They never were really an ensemble until this year. So to be able to pull it together and sound so good and so crisp, again, is a testament to our music program and the focus really starting at elementary with our Arts Magnet program. So that's it? Oh, no. Oh, we did do some, yeah, thank you. We interviewed for the posa position last week, first round. And then this week, we're conducting second rounds. So hopefully, when we meet again next month, I'll be able to announce that we've hired a posa.
Wonderful. Thank you. Any questions for superintendent dean?
Busy, busy, busy.
Busy.
Always.
All right, since there are.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Superintendent Dean. And for admitting it all together, I do think that tonight's board agenda was nice in that way, where it did start to highlight how I heard elements of the strategic plan coming forward and goals. And it's just nice to start to see that get organized in that way. So thank you, gratitude for that. And your team?
Yeah, the team has been working hard as well. Thank you. Thank you for that. The team has been working extremely hard as well as every single staff member in this organization. I know you've heard it or maybe you haven't heard it, but across the state and across the country, our learners are coming back to us, not the way they left. I'll use a slogan that, a slogan with a tagline that was from our youth. And we have out of shape learners right now. And it's like going to the gym, when you were in the gym in early 2020, you might have been able to, you know, do whatever cardio or lift whatever, bench press whatever weight. And then when the gym shut down in 2020, after 18 months, you go back to the gym, you're not running that 15-minute mile away you ran it or lift the way you lifted prior to the pandemic. And that's what we're seeing with our learners right now, that we have to accommodate where they're coming back at because they're just, they're out of shape learners. And it's really getting them back up to the rigor and to the pace that they were pre-pandemic. So, yeah.
Our teachers too.
And our teachers too.
They had to change so much and try to get back to normal as far as that is concerned.
So I sit here over the past two months, listening to the board reports and all the work that our staff has done over the past three months. It's really a tremendous, tremendous acknowledgement of staff of this district, both in the teaching and I got to look up the custodians, the fearers, the secretaries, the entire organization. So thank you for recognizing this.
Thank you. All right, so then that gets us to our final agenda item, which is item number 10, which is adjournment. Do I entertain a motion to adjourn?
So vote.
I have a first from Ms. Johnson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Nealon. I have a first and a second. Any further discussion about the motion to adjourn? I mean, no further discussion about the motion to adjourn. I'll call for a vote. All in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion carries. We are officially adjourned. It is 9:11 PM.
Thank you.
9:11?
Check. Have I heard a radio?
Yes.
Great. I did too. I took the foot notice to what they were for.
Is this the electrical box?
I'm on my battery. That depends on the computer.
Yeah, Ray, I'm hoping they carry all of yourself. So you're legends, we dress up, we sing like your person. We're all good, right?
I'm not singing anything, Gordy.
Come on.
Come, I donate my money, have a little fun, eat some good food, you know?
Be silky at your table for the money then.
Everyone has been registered for the leadership conference.
Thank you.
If you have a last minute cancellation, I do need to know by January 5th, the latest. Then we will take and still go through.
That sounds good. Thank you. You know, just one other thing, just for note for you guys to like generally be aware of, is Thursday morning at 8:30. Again, it's not really board business anymore, but Mr. Durant is in court for a hearing.
Is it in person?
Yeah.
Is it open to the public?
It is. Mr. Martin, our counsel for the district, will be attending to listen to the settlement hearing.
Talk a little?